Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's City Council meeting, November 14th, 2022. I'd first await a motion to leave the non-public and to steal the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And on to this meeting, Kelly, would you please be as kind to take the role?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor McEckernan?
Here.
Assistant Mayor Kelly is absent this evening. Counselor Taber?
Here.
Counselor Denton?
Here.
Counselor Moreau?
Here.
Counselor Bagley?
Here.
Counselor Lombardi?
Here.
Counselor Blaylock?
Here.
Counselor Cook?
Here.
And I would just, for the invocation, there's Portsmouth, well, originally Summersworth, but moved to Portsmouth, a man by the name of Lincoln Soldati, lost a four-and-a-half-year battle with cancer recently. Many in the community know and love his wife Kathleen, who my mother did birthing classes way back when, when she was giving birth to Michael. He leaves Pacifico, Michael Emmett, and Gemma behind, and I just wanted to take a moment and send our condolences to the Soldati family as they grieve the loss of Lincoln. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, no recognitions in volunteer committee reports, but I do want to recognize Kelly for another fantastic election that her and her team made sure happened without a hitch. Highest midterm voter turnout ever and almost touched the 2020 number, so there's a huge amount of work that goes into that. You know, it's hard work, making sure you vote, but making sure all the votes are tabulated, it's a hell of a job, Kelly, so thank you for being on the front lines of our democracy. Next up, public comment. The first up is Zalita. Zalita, are you here? She's not here. Once Zalita gets here, we will have her speak. Next up is Mary Lou McElwain on the topic of Maplewood Intersections. Mary Lou.
Good evening, city councilors, mayor, city manager, city attorney, Mary Lou McElwain, 259 South Street. And thank you for acknowledging Kelly. I was working at Ward 5, and it was amazing how answers came immediately if we had any issues. We had a policeman there all day long. Everything went smoothly. It was a great, great day. I'm here to talk not as a member of the Parking and Traffic Safety Committee, but as a resident pedestrian. And my concerns are specific to the three intersections on Maplewood Avenue, at Congress Islington, at Hanover, and at Deer Street. Several years ago, these intersections were upgraded. However, as part of that, the stoplights turn green when the pedestrian light is on. And so the chances are, it feels very threatening to be crossing the street when a green light is on and you still have a pedestrian light going. I've had many incidents when it's happened to me, when vehicles, a big truck came up. They come, what happens is they come across the crosswalk in their lane to turn right, and they come right up to the crosswalk that you're on. I've seen it too often. I saw it with a group of people a couple of weeks ago, and not everybody who is crossing the sidewalk is totally paying attention. First of all, they don't step off the curb as soon as the light turns for the pedestrian walk. And I'm not sure if the cars turning right are paying attention either. If they've been at a stoplight, they may have been using their phone, they may still be on the phone. It feels very threatening, it's intimidating, it's dangerous, and I feel as if cars are, drivers are actually chomping at the bit when they're waiting to turn right. They aren't paying attention to the signs that say yield to pedestrians. They're not paying attention to the signs that have an icon, pedestrian icon on it, or the numbers. So you're crossing those walks, and the pedestrian icon is on, and at 15, at 15, the light turns green. And those vehicles, those drivers are looking to turn right. So I would like you to look at it. I've been told that it's safer. It's not safe enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Lou. Next up, Christopher Burns on the topic of the flagpole at 238 Deer Street.
Hello, my name is Christopher Burns. I'm a Portsmouth resident, 70 Dennett Street. Thank you, city councilors, Mayor McEckernan, for your time. Portsmouth has a fabulous history of flagpoles. The Liberty Pole at Prescott Park has stood there since 1766. A refurbishing project for the Liberty Pole was completed in 2019. The Gilded American Eagle resides at the Portsmouth Library. Memorial Park has many flags, and even in Frontier, we have two very large flags. I recently discovered the city has another opportunity to preserve a historic flagpole in Portsmouth. The property at 238 Deer Street has a flagpole that was the home of the Portsmouth Veterans Foreign Wars post 168. The city Portsmouth sold the property to the VFW in 1966. There, they built the VFW Hall. The VFW Hall at Deer Street welcomed home veterans from Korean War, Vietnam War, Iraq, and Afghanistan. It was a home from camaraderie of veterans of World War I, World War II. Veterans Day started at the location of this very flagpole that parades. The flag on that pole for 50 years has honored half-staff. The VFW sold the property in 2017. Since then, the flag has flown locally at the known restaurant, The Stady. In 2021, a proposal was submitted to redevelop the property at 238 Deer Street. The development proposed the building of property in mixed use. Development plan did not include anything to preserve the VFW history. The plan did not preserve the flagpole. The rendering drawings did not even include American flag. The property has been sold again in 2022. I do not know the current owner or their development plans. This is not important to me. What is important to me is remembering our veterans and to preserve the history of this flagpole. The City Council has an opportunity to give the citizens of Portsmouth an opportunity to thank its veterans for their service by preserving this flagpole. The flagpole stands about 30 feet, is in excellent shape. Does a pivoting flagpole mean the base can be decoupled from its foundation, lowered to the ground level for repairs and relocating? I'm inquiring to City Council investigate, pursuing of the 238 Deer Street flagpole. Investigation include pursuing ownership of the flagpole, storing the flagpole during construction, and finally building a location for a foundation of the flagpole on the corner of Deer Street and Bridge Street. I see I am out of my time, so I want to thank the councilors, Mayor McEckernan, for your time tonight.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. Zalita, on the topic of various.
Well, not the last today, so, thank you. Good evening, Zalita Morgan, 39, Richards. I want to recognize our city clerk, clerk and team, as well as all our award moderators, regardless of your party, for upholding democracy. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now, public comment, our favorite topic. If you could only active listen. So active listening implies someone is intent in understanding someone else's position, and because of such, can raise intelligent questions, make comments, and if in a position of authority such as you all are, councilors, think and ponder of possible ways to address concerns. I totally agree with the comments made by the legal director of the ACLU on any censorship or infringement to legitimate freedom of speech. Our employees are well-paid and compensated. They are hired to provide a service, a public service to our community, using funds by all of the stakeholders, property owners, renters, commercial businesses, and so on. And the actions of our city staff should be transparent. Let me share again my thoughts over my experience. So I have been, I think you all know how I, my thoughts about a governance meeting that takes place on Mondays at 10 o'clock in the morning. Now, a governance meeting is a big deal. You're talking about how we function, how we are governed, and how we expect to govern. So over several months, I have attended several meetings. I have communicated, expressed my opinions, provided positive thoughts over that. I have shared those thoughts with our mayor. I have come to you quite a few times and shared. So as far as I'm concerned, there has been absolutely no active conversation around this. Nothing has changed. You continue to bring here to the public forum in a very rushed first-second reading, and we know what happened with the audit committee was sent back, and when it came back to the public, it was rewritten not as you had intended, you had passed the language. So an audience of 50, 15 participants is not representative of a city of ours. You must agree with me.
Thank you, Zalita.
I guess I will submit this comments later to the city clerk so that it can be, with your consent, it can be attached to the minutes of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Zalita. Next up, Mark Brighton, the subject of apologies.
Mark Brighton, South Mill Street. Mr. Mayor, since you speak for the council, you owe a big fat apology to those of us sitting in the cheap seats, the peanut gallery, peanut gallery, as it were, for even intimating that this council had the power to control the content of our speech. Counselor Blaylock, as recently as Wednesday's HTC meeting, you said that there should be no applause. What is the matter with you people? What are you afraid of? The ACLU scorched you. Here's a little history lesson that is in order. Aaron Goodwin, a cop, is, did, in my, in my opinion, worm his way into the life of an elderly woman with dementia. He got himself named in her will to receive $2.7 million in property and stocks. If not for the efforts of a retired police officer, John Connors, Goodwin would have gotten away with it, gotten away with this, in my opinion, swindle. Connors was similar Connors was summarily fired from his part-time position of police work for having exercised his free speech rights by talking to the local paper. Connors gained the backup of the mass uprising of the citizenry, who spoke vociferously at police commission meetings and before the council. Mr. Mayor, your father would eventually represent John Connors. I don't think you were around then, but, and it may be news to many of you, since most of you people haven't a clue what I'm talking about at this moment. If not for the free speech, if not for free speech, this travesty might have occurred, meaning Goodwin getting a hold of this money. We might still be stuck with a corrupt police hierarchy who backed Goodwin to the hilt. Remember this the next time you want to vote us off the island.
Thanks, Mark. I was around, and you left Beth Dyna did some good reporting on that as well. Next up, Liza Hewitt, topic of a few things on my mind.
My name is Liza Hewitt, and I live at 726 Middle Road. Tonight, the mayor is considering the nomination of David Rayum to the BOA, Board of Adjustment. This nomination is problematic for several reasons. Mr. Rayum's wife, Beth Moreau, is a member of the city council. She also sits on the planning board and is the chair of the land use committee. Because both the planning board and the BOA are quasi-judicial boards, having a husband and wife as members on those two boards presents a conflict of the juror standard. As I don't think it is reasonable to assume that they will have no discussion about projects being presented to their opposing boards. Because the governance committee is currently discussing membership on boards and committees, perhaps there should be a discussion on husband-wife teams representing both the planning board and the BOA, as well as the additional conflict of the juror standard involving a city councillor married to a BOA member. My next concern is for the changes to the assisted living ordinance, which you are considering sending to the planning board for review. I have attended all of the land use committee meetings since they began in April. The first three months, the committee discussed what they called Phase One changes, such as building heights. The next four months, the committee spent discussing changes to the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, also in your packet. This involved both residence surveys and focus groups over a four-month period. Now comes the changes to the assisted living zoning regulations, which were presented at the November 4th Land Use Committee meeting. Three members of the committee spent eight and a half minutes discussing the changes they were proposing, which would impact zoning through large portions of the city. Keep in mind that the ADU discussions took four months. I felt like I was attending a meeting in a different country, spoken in a different language. The eight-and-a-half-minute discussion consisted of acronyms and abbreviations, none of which were explained. No map showing the areas impacted by the proposed zoning changes was provided to either the other members of the committee nor the residents attending the meeting. In fact, the paid land use committee consultant appeared as confused as the residents as to which the change is proposed, as to what the change is proposed, involved. Something isn't right here. Zoning changes involving the city deserve more than an eight-and-a-half-minute discussion. I urge you all, as city council members, to do your due diligence and ask that the proposed assisted living ordinance changes be sent back to the land use committee for further clarification with maps before this council sends it along to the planning board for review. Thank you.
Thank you, Liza. Next up, Paige Trace, the topic of Portsmouth.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My first time up here, Mayor McEckern, I called the other mayor, it was Mayor Blaylock, and I called a mayor Lister. It was a long time ago, and I had maps in my hand, and I thought, I'll never do that again. Here I am. To continue Mrs. Hewitt's comments, I urge the public, and I urge all of you, to watch the land use committee and watch it from 20-10 to 23 minutes, 22 seconds. It's about helping out. I think we have. We've addressed it. GD1, GD2, CD5, CD4. Now, what's included in your packet tonight is a general list like this, which, God forbid, MRO, CD4L1, GAMH, BCD4W, WBORIW1. So GAMH is changed from N to S. MRO, CD4L1 is changed from N to S. The good ones for assisted living are CD4, CD5, from N to P. And N to P, again, but do any of you know whether P is permitted or not permitted, prohibited? No, you don't really, unless you go to your legend down below. Or do you know where it is? Because that would require a map and a legend, of which neither were included. So I say to you, even the head of the planning department said, well, we've had specific requests, haven't we? Does this help? So I say to you, in the interests of transparency, you were elected to serve all the residents, not just specific requests for a change in zoning for assisted living. And I thank you very much for your time. It's about the process. It's about transparency. Thank you.
Thank you, Paige. Next up, former mayor Rick Bexted on a simple request.
Good evening, Rick Bexted, 1395 Isnton Street. Basically, the last two, I've watched several of them. It was very confusing exactly what was cited by former councillor Trace. Numbers were basically given out. There was no map of any kind at all. I mean, I served four years on councils, and I have never seen a proposed change on any land use regulations of differences and not have a map. You yourselves tonight don't have a map. So you're basically relying on councillor Monroe to be able to go and depict or answer any questions for you. And as far as, one of the things that I learned in my last two years on the council, I had a councillor that was there that reminded us from time to time, many a time, that if a document wasn't in the agenda, that it's something that the council really shouldn't be voting on because the public really didn't get a view on it. There are major concerns on it. Some of the sites, if you look on the maps and you had to go back, it took the weekend on and off to be able to figure it out. You're talking about Pevely Hill Road and changing zoning for that that would allow this assisted living. You're talking about Constitution, you're talking about Heritage, you're talking about Bartlett Street. People don't know these things. And I think if they had known something about that at the land use committee, which was supposed to be part of the start of the public process, and they had a map and they were aware of it, I think you probably would get a little more participation from it. I think it's something fair to do to the public with such a huge change. You're talking about industrial land that's out there on Pevely Hill Road. I mean, that's very controversial. I'm sure if, and he never agrees with me, is David Choate. David Choate comes to the EDC meeting at least once a month, and he gives a review on what we have for industrial space. I know the workforce is having issues with it, but I don't think that the intent really should be to change that. There's such little industrial space that we have in Portsmouth. I think that should be a conversation for the entire public, maybe even a charrette of some sort before we really go and make those changes. When I watched the video, and the planning director had mentioned something about inquiries, that meant that somebody specifically came to the city and asked for this change on a property they either own or they're looking to own. So what do we have to do with that? You can't go and just change one zoning for one piece of property, you have to look at the entire city. And I think just a few people were involved in the, basically, the ability to be able to go and make those recommendations to changes and then bring them to you. I would ask that it go back to the land use committee so it has more public involvement with it and more awareness. And I'm going to leave it at that, other than the simple fact that the gentleman that has talked about the flagpole is something that isn't owned by the city. It's owned by a property, it has been transferred over. I was not aware that the property had been sold again. My recommendation would be is at some point, and I know it'd only be in the corner, the city is going to be putting a park up that's going to be between the Founding Place Garage and Lot 3 of the DSA. I would make a recommendation, that's going to be city property, the city could then relocate and own the flagpole so it would stand forever. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. Next up is Elizabeth Bratter on the topic of zoning. Oh, hold on, sorry, forgot, you are in Dover. You have to go last. Arthur, Arthur Clow, on the topic of a shakedown.
Mayor McEckern, city councilors, I'm Arthur Clow from 431 Pleasant Street. I'm here to talk about the quasi-judicial nature of the boards. Several years ago, a person who had been on one of these boards told me that she was called aside by another land use board member, a different board, actually, and took her out to lunch and said to her, "The mayor doesn't like the way that you're voting." Now, if you're on a jury, then you have an idea that you're not allowed to discuss the case with people, you're not supposed to influence juries, you're supposed to leave jurists alone. But we have a historic, we have historic precedents and current occurrences of quasi-judicial land use board members being intimidated. One, after she had this initial meeting, she sat down with the mayor at the time, who asked, who tried to intimidate her along with city staff, and the mayor said to her, "All of the other members, are they stupid? They all voted different than you. Are you calling them all stupid?" So just things to intimidate them, but this stuff is still happening today. Recently, several different land use board members have come to me and let me know, or I've heard about it through the grapevine and confirmed it, that city staff, including the legal department, is intimidating them, is calling them in. And in one case, a person in the legal department suggested that looking at a person's Facebook profile, not Facebook, excuse me, LinkedIn profile, could be considered stalking. That's concerning. According to the State of New Hampshire Board of Conduct for Attorneys, "A lawyer shall not communicate with a juror or prospective juror if the communication involves misrepresentation, coercion, duress, or harassment. They shall not engage in conduct intended to disrupt a tribunal." What I've heard from multiple people is that they are being intimidated to leave their positions. They're not, because the intimidation went too far. And even the mayor, one time, participated in this on a level, when he asked attorney Sullivan to reach out to one of the land use board members and tell him that he, because he was a land use board member, he had to have a different decorum at the meetings. This is juror harassment, it's despicable, attorneys shouldn't be involved with this, neither should city staff, neither should anybody on the council. You guys should stand up for these volunteers and protect them.
Thank you, Arthur. Next up is Petra Huda with the topic of McIntyre updates.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, Petra Huda, 280 South Street. I just have a slight request. If you look at the agenda tonight, the city manager has nine pages altogether in here before the council. And then in the back, we have number 15, 16, 17, with a McIntyre update, report back on the dog ordinance, and city cemetery committee report. My request is simple. Can we please move everything together so that when the city manager is speaking, it's continuous, and the residents do not have to sit here for two, three, four, five, depending on how long you're here, and wait for-
Hopefully not five.
Hopefully not. And wait for an update on this. That was my first question, first request, please. My second one is, in the last update that the city manager gave, she said that we will be receiving a financial analysis on the McIntyre project soon. My request is, is this going to be made public, and when will that happen? So the rest of us in the public can read and enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Petra. Is there anybody on Zoom?
There are no hands.
All right.
Ms. Bratter.
Oh, sorry. I'm so forgetful. Thank you, councillor Blaylock of Elizabeth.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Bratter, property owner of 159 McDonough Street and a few others, but we don't need to talk about that. I'm just coming to ask that the assisted living part of the land use committee that was submitted be pushed back to the land use committee. It was presented with very little time to look at it. A lot of the committee members didn't even get it until less than 12 hours before. It was discussed, it was very confusing for people who don't know much about zoning. The acronyms were not available to look at, and I noticed in the packet, they're not there either when you get to that at the end of the meeting. I felt that some of the zoning areas, like CD4W, which abuts very, a lot of single-family homes, such as GRC, GRA, CD4L1, and CD4L2, in case you don't know, those, a couple of them are mixed use, but the rest are residential, single-family homes. Things that I understood at the meeting to be changed to special exceptions are showing now as permitted. So it just seems to me that this portion of it should go back to land use committee. I've attended all the meetings, I think, except for two, Liza can correct me on that. But I try to go because I think it's important to have some sort of public show up, and you guys don't see me because I think the city people who live here should be doing that. But I am known very well in the zoning board and in the planning board. So I do go to a lot of meetings, and therefore I am familiar with the letters and what the acronyms stand for. But most residents do not. So therefore, I would ask you specifically to move the assisted living back to the land use committee to go over whatever details people have concerned about. And it's a big thing to change zoning, and I think a lot of times, we try to get it done in a certain amount of time, and sometimes those impacts are great. And we're looking at ADUs, and yet, ADUs were modified or cleaned up a little bit not too long ago, a few years ago. So I think this is something that we should take very seriously in any city. And if there are any kind of things that are concerning to citizens, I think they should go back to the original committee and then re-present it. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Checking again, no hands on the Zoom. We will go forth to the public hearings and vote on ordinances and resolutions. First-
Mr. Mayor, did we do acceptance of the minutes?
You know what? We didn't. We had Kelly work so hard, prepare the minutes, put them in the packet.
Just thought we should probably-
And I didn't even, didn't even see that.
It's okay.
Wrong, I'd move we accept the minutes of August 22nd.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Anything else I'm missing here, missing here? Nope. Okay. So first reading of ordinances, first reading of ordinance amending Chapter 12 and Chapter 15 Cities Building Code, sample motion moved to pass first reading and schedule a public hearing and second reading at the December 5, 2022 city council meeting.
So moved.
Second, any discussion on this? Well, I think it's a, there's a lot that goes into this, look forward to hearing the papers. A lot of it is duplicative, but, you know, getting a, you know, having to just go to one place for that will be helpful. So all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Next up is the first reading of ordinance amending Chapter 5, Article 1, Fire Department, Section 5 dot 101 Personnel, and Article 9, Fire Code. I'd wait a sample motion to pass first reading and schedule a public hearing and second reading at the December 5, 2022 city council meeting. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this? No, I think we'll get into more of the questions when we get to the public hearing on that, but appreciate that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And now the first reading of ordinance amending Chapter 1, Article 4, Section 1 dot 408, Cable and Television and Communications Commission. I'd wait a motion to pass first reading and schedule a public hearing and second reading at the January 9, 2023 city council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Councilor Moreau.
I really like the changes in the way they've kind of restructured it and reworded it a little bit. I guess, I don't know if this is possible, but to work in, that it'd be really nice if they could try to find a way to do as much underground utilities with some of this and be proponent of that would be also a nice add-in to it. Would be my only comment.
Any other discussion? Well, I'll just add that we get not a surprisingly amount, but a reasonable amount of inquiries on why cell service sucks so bad in Portsmouth. And a part of this would be to broaden the scope of what is kind of under the purview of this, so pretty excited. And thanks to Deputy City Manager Suzanne Woodland, who has kind of taken this under her arms and brought forth some pretty good changes. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next up, a public hearings adoptions of resolutions. Public hearing adoption of resolution appropriating $85,000 from American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, grant to pay costs associated with the purchase of an ambulance and the payment of costs incidental and related thereto. First up, I believe we have a presentation.
I am happy to speak to this, and the fire chief is with me, Your Honor. Essentially, what we are here tonight to request is an additional $85,000 to use toward the purchase of a new ambulance. In the last three years, we have set aside funding in the amount of $310,000. Typically, we set aside a third each year for an ambulance. And last year, as a way to absorb some of the costs and the increases in the budget, we put the $140,000 set aside in year three of three for the ambulance to be used for by ARPA funding and not the general fund. Since that time, we have learned that the price of an ambulance is $85,000 more than we have on hand. And so we find it most appropriate to continue with the acquisition of the ambulance and not delay, but to seek ARPA funding for this amount. And as such, we are required to hold a public hearing, and we would, the chief and the fire commissioner, Gamester, are both here. We are happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Pretty informative in the packet. Thank you, City Manager. Now, we have public hearing speakers. Anybody from the public that'd like to speak on the adoption of the resolution appropriating the $85,000? Going once, going twice, I will close the public hearing. Seeing no further questions, I would await a motion to adopt the resolution as presented and-
So moved.
Second.
Do we need a roll call vote on this?
Yes.
Yep. I had to wait a roll call vote.
Assistant Mayor Kelly is not here. Councilor Tabor?
Yes.
Councilor Denton?
Yes.
Councilor Moreau?
Yes.
Councilor Bagley?
Yes.
Council Lombardi?
Yes.
Council Blaylock?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCaughern?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Next up, the public hearing adoption of resolution appropriating $800,000 to purchase one fire apparatus and authorizing a bond issue and/or notes of up to $800,000 to meet this appropriation.
Your Honor, again with the assistance of Chief McClellan and Fire Commissioner Gamester, if you need them, this is a request to replace an aging fire engine currently in our FY '25 rolling stock schedule. However, similar to the ambulance, which has a two-year lead time, this also has a two-year lead time. What we're looking to do now is to seek bonding authorization of the up to 100, up to $800,000 that we had set aside. So that we may sign a contract to ensure that the apparatus will be delivered on time in July of '24. Please note that we do not have to make any payments until delivery occurs, but the idea would be that borrowing of the funds would not take place until FY '25, which is when we scheduled it anyway. We just need this earlier than normal authorization because of the longer lead time.
Okay.
Thank you.
That makes sense to me. Any questions? Councilor Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to clarify, when we authorize the bond, we don't actually set the interest rate until we need the money, so to speak.
When we go to market.
There's no risk that because interest rates are high now, hopefully they'll be lower when we go to market at some point in the future.
That would be ideal and correct.
Any other questions? Councilor Tabor?
Thank you, Your Honor. I was reading about these two-year delays in getting fire engines. Are we safe with our current 2006 apparatus for the next two years?
You're getting the fire chief to come out of his seat, but originally, this was going to be purchased in 2025.
It was the plan. Correct.
But you're-
Thank you for the question, Councilor. Yes, the truck that this would replace is a reserved piece of apparatus, and then the current front line piece of apparatus would be moved into reserve. And this, by doing this tonight, this enables me to be able to sign a contract essentially this week so that we can ensure that we get the delivery on time of the vehicle. We don't have to face any more delays.
Thank you.
Learned we have reserved fire engines first.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fire Chief. Any other questions? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote?
Sorry, we need a public hearing.
Public hearing. Anybody from the public would like to speak on moving up the authorization on the fire Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for any additional questions. Seeing none, I will-
Need a motion, right?
Need a motion.
Yeah, we would await a motion to adopt the resolution as presented.
So moved. Second.
Kelly, can you please call the roll?
Councilor Tabor?
Yes.
Councilor Denton?
Yes.
Councilor Moreau?
Yes.
Councilor Bagley?
Yes.
Council Lombardi?
Yes.
Council Blaylock?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCaughern?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Next up, we have the public hearing, a second reading of ordinance amending Chapter 1, Article 4, Commissions and Authorities, Section 1 dot 412, Public Art Review Committee. Do we have a presentation on this? Council Cook, would you like to speak to it?
Thank you, Mayor McCaughern. On behalf of the Governance Committee, I'm bringing forward tonight for a public hearing the Public Art Review Committee ordinance. This is a new ordinance that is being proposed, and it comes directly out of the Public Art Guidelines adopted in 2015 that included recommendations for a Public Art Review Committee. The reason that this is coming forward is that we have found over the past few years, especially since we do, we no longer have art speak functioning at the city level, that it's much more difficult at this stage to set up a review committee whenever we have a proposal for public art that comes before the council. Currently, the way it stands, any public art proposal that comes before the council has to be referred, then to the city manager to set up a second, a committee to review that proposal. It can take months to set up a committee. So it also can be very difficult to find people to serve. So that becomes a challenge when it comes to trying to consider public art projects. And we have an ordinance already that requires public art projects whenever we have a capital project with the city. So this is designed to fix that challenge so that we have a standing Public Art Review Committee that relieves the need to constantly recruit members to serve on a Public Art Review Committee. And it follows directly the guidelines that came in our recommendations. They were part of a review of what were the best practice for public art review for the city. So we're just really adopting those recommendations and setting up this Public Art Review Committee and hopefully relieving some pressure on the council, on the city manager, to constantly be trying to reinvent this process every time we have public art come before the council.
Thank you, Councilor Cook. Any council questions for Councilor Cook? Councilor Tabor?
I would just add that another benefit we'll get from this as counselors is that they'll meet at least quarterly, and they will give us a written report, and they have the capability to encourage contributions to our Public Art Trust Fund. So there are things we as a council can't do well that citizens from our community can do well, and I think this is a great example.
Listen to the public, see any speakers, but I love looking through, and there's a lot of experience, you know, that's called out there, but then there's also folks like myself with art necessarily, the artistic ability, but the appreciation for art included there. So I appreciate the wide swath of people that are included in that. Councilor Cook. So with that, we'll open the public hearing on this. Are there any public members from the public that'd like to speak to or against the Public Art Committee? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and we'll see if there's any additional questions. If not, I'd wait a motion to pass second reading and hold third and final reading at the December 5, 2022 city council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Kelly, would you please call? Oh, we don't need a roll call because they're not spending money. It's just a committee. Not just a committee. It's a fantastic committee, but it's not $800,000. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Okay. Next is the second part of Councilor Cook's work. Public hearing, second reading of ordinance amending Chapter 1, Article 17, Funding of Public Art, Section 1 dot 1704, exemption in Section 1 dot 1707, funding accepted. Would you like to speak on this as well?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is our current Public Art Ordinance, and we, this is coming forward from governance again. These are some minor changes to the Public Art Ordinance that are coming about because of some challenges that the council's incurred in the past in dealing with public art. The first change you will see is actually not until you get to 1.1704, the exemption section. And the reason that this arises is we have dealt with this very recently with a sewer treatment plant. When we have a public art commitment, we basically require a percentage for the arts, and that is capped. So it's, it never exceeds the, we never calculate that 1% beyond a $15 million expenditure. So just note that if we have a $40 million expenditure, we don't use $40 million to count our 1%. We look at a $15 million expenditure. But in the case of the sewer treatment plant, the question was, where do we put the public art? And we really didn't have a good provision for how to deal with that. So when we got to the exemption, the idea was, well, it's not a good place to put public art. How can we deal with this? We wanted to make it possible for the council to allow public art in another location that's a city-owned public property associated with a capital project if the location that is where the capital project is being built does not make sense for a public art piece. So that's what you see with the exemption in Section 1.1704. It says, "In those cases, the public art associated with the project should be placed on other publicly owned property within the city at the determination of the council." So this still leaves this to the council. And in Section 1.707, this also allows the council to accept donations with a designated purpose to commission works of public art to be placed on public property. This is another challenge that we have, where when people come forward with a donation that they want to give to the city for public art, it's not really clear that we can accept that donation if it's designated for a specific kind of art or specific piece of art. So this allows us to take those donations. And if we have a Public Art Review Committee, then of course, then they would consider what to do with that when it comes down. So it just allows us to accept more money and more donations for public art, and that's the goal. I would note that in Section 1.1704, there is a strike through that I would offer a slight amendment to before, if we can, before we hear the public hearing, or we can offer it after, but I want the, for public hearing, for people to know that where we did strike through on 1.1702, that is not accurate, that shouldn't be there, that strike through, it should be left as it was, 1.1702, and not changed to 1.1701. That was just a missed reference.
Okay.
In renumbering.
I think that's certainly fine. Do we need an amendment on legal inquiry? I guess, do we need an amendment on the-
To make that correction.
To make the correction, or could we just simply pass it and have the correction be made for third and final reading?
I'd be happy to move to make that correction.
I think you can do it either way.
And do we, we'll get to it after the public comment, but let's hold that until we, well, I'll slightly change the requested motion. Any members from the public that would like to speak on the public funding of public art, Section 1.1704 and 1.1707? Seeing none, I will ask the counselors if there's any further questions? Nope. You know, I think it's a, there's a lot of questions around the sewer treatment plant about, you know, where are we putting all that art back there? I still think it's a beautiful walkout there, but I also, my dad, full of many lines, but one of them was, you know, remember the wars we start and the art we leave behind? I don't think anybody that has visited Portsmouth, at least under 10, has done so without getting on the back of that whale in Prescott Park. It is a, an image burned into my brain and one that I was happy to share with my daughter. You don't even realize that your world is expanding just by being around art. So would love to be able to do this in a way, and what's beautiful about this is being able to incorporate the public art earlier in the design of buildings. So it's not just about, you know, taking this extra cash, but how can we make buildings, you know, impactful and beautiful at the beginning of that process? So thank you for bringing this forward, and I would wait a motion, this is where we got to, await a motion to pass second reading with section, with the removal of the strike through, as noted by Councilor Cook, and hold third and final reading at the December 5, 2022 city council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So we're on to the city manager, but I see, just trying to see if there's, I know that we have Mark and Larry out in terms of, we have two presentations. So can we, I got through, we got through the majority of the, or all the public comment, but can we get, can we pull forward the, I'd wait a motion to pull forward the presentations and written communications section?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I meant to say to suspend the rules.
To spend the rules to do it, yeah.
That's what, okay. All right.
I thought it.
So first up is the 2022- So first up is the 2022 Data Collection Presentation by Ms. Roseanne Luntz.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name's Roseanne. I'm the city assessor for the city of Portsmouth, and I'm coming forward today to bring forward to the public and to the city council the data collection process that the city of Portsmouth Assessor's Office is going to begin, hopefully this coming week. In order to comply with state mandates and maintain accurate property data, it is necessary to measure and list properties throughout the city periodically. Data collections are conducted to enhance the overall accuracy and, of property data throughout the city and to help maintain fair and equitable property values. The last measure and list that the city did was in 2012, and it was completed in 2015, so it's been a while. This data collection is expected to last until the end of tax year 2024, fiscal year 2025. So I'm expecting it to last over an 18 to 24 month period, and it's going to be done by in-house appraisers versus hiring outside appraisers or data collectors. The data collection process requires an inspection of the interior as well as measurements of the exterior of all buildings. The interior inspections will take approximately 10 minutes and is necessary in order to determine the full and true value of the property. All property data will be entered into the camera system for further review and analysis. So a notification process is going to start with the taxpayers receiving a notice of the intended inspection in the mail, and the city's website will indicate where the inspections are in process. This notice will also give property owners the opportunity to make an appointment versus a knock on the door. If no one is home, the exterior of the building and outbuildings will be measured, and a door hanger will be left requesting an interior inspection. If a homeowner is not comfortable with an interior inspection, the appraiser will and can take the information from the property owner at the door. For safety concerns, all city appraisers and data collectors will have proper picture identification in view, and the Portsmouth Police Department will be aware of the data collection, or the data collectors and appraisers' identity along with the vehicle registration and information. All appraisers and data collectors will have pictures posted on the city's webpage. No appraiser will enter the interior of the property with an underage child in the home without an adult. And if any residents have any questions regarding the project and information pertaining to the data collection, they can call the Assessor's Office. Thank you.
Roseanne, any questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor, if I might, Roseanne would want you to know that this process will start this week.
This week, Roseanne, and the notices are going to be, look like a postcard.
Okay, and so the notices will go to the homeowner before somebody shows up to do interior or even exterior?
Right, and we'll be doing them neighborhoods at a time. So, and then we'll be listing those neighborhoods that we're in on the webpage, and then we'll also be on the webpage showing if we, when we've completed that neighborhood. And people can still call at any time to ask us to come in.
Okay. I guess the second question that I would have, in terms of measuring the exterior, if somebody has a fence, will the, will the members of your team, will they be going, will they be opening fences to?
No.
Okay, so they will not open fences only if there is a, only if there's a freely accessible outdoor area they want, okay?
Right, the measure and list is important, but we have other means if we can't get behind fences. We have Google Earth that we can measure from. We have Eagle View we can measure from. So we can get that information, but it's better to have accurate information versus us estimating it.
Okay, and if a homeowner does want there's, to schedule this for a time when they are home, that information is on the card to reach out to your office?
Yes.
Okay. And I guess the last question that I have, I don't know why I'm so interested in all this, but the, how did we make it so far? We expect from, it was 2012, and it was done in 2015, but then we've made it another seven years, but we only expect this to last, oh, just the data collection. So it'll last a whole nother, seemingly similar amount of time?
Right, this data collection process is supposed to just help maintain our property data. Portsmouth has a great permitting system, so we, and we've had a lot of sales, so we have a lot of the property data, but we try and just get everybody on the same page. So, and this will help during the next reevaluation to make sure everybody's assessments are fair and accurate.
Thank you, Roseanne.
You're welcome.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up, we have, I think it's, yep, the Greater Portsmouth Recovery Ready Community Coalition Presentation, and Larry McCullough is going to be doing this, Mark is not, but thanks so much, he's here. We have questions specifically for Mark, but thank you, Larry, for joining us tonight.
Yes, great, well, thank you. Good evening, Mayor McEckern, council members, city manager Conard. I'm Larry McCullough, Executive Director of Pine Tree Institute. Also with me this evening is Mark LaFave, who is Director of Community Engagement for Pine Tree Institute, has been a lead facilitator for the coordinated response to substance use disorder. Also Alan Gold, who I believe most of you know, Vice Chair of the EDC, is President of the Pine Tree Institute Board, and also has been a member of the Steering Committee for Coordinated Response since its inception three and a half years ago. Thank you so much for allowing us to be with you this evening. We're here to really update you on the progress of the coordinated response, and also talk with you about some next steps that we think are important to be able to carry this into the future. The background of this, some of you may remember that in May of 2019, Portsmouth City Council and Portsmouth Rotary jointly funded an initial effort to explore what the city could do in a coordinated effort to address what was clearly becoming a crisis in dealing with the opiate addiction issues, which have now moved beyond opiates to other drugs like fentanyl, methamphetamines, and so on. In that early work, it became clear that having all of the services of the community work together to address this issue is going to be essential if we were going to get any kind of traction on it. And in that early phase, we worked with the services to say, so what are the big areas that we need to address? We identified five areas that were the priorities at that time. Recovery housing, employment, access to services, which very quickly became the issue of connectivity during the pandemic, coordination of services across the community, and also community education and training. These were the five areas that continually came up over and over again as the priorities to be addressed. This group has been working for the last, well, since fall of 2019, to address these areas, and there's been some substantial results that have been achieved. Pretty astounding, actually. In May of 2019, there were no recovery homes in Rockingham County. There were no recovery beds. And in the recovery community, there's a maxim that if you're working on recovery, the maxim is housing first. If someone in recovery does not have a stable place to live, it's very difficult to get anything else beyond that. 2019, there were no beds in Rockingham County. There was a need, 80 people were sent outside of Rockingham County for services. Since that time, through the efforts of the coordinated response and through some private operators, there are now two recovery homes based in Hampton, but that serve all of Rockingham County. And directly through the efforts of this, through the coordinated response, and through the generous contribution of a private donor, over the last year, the number of beds has doubled. So there are now 24 beds in Rockingham County, 12 for women, 12 for men, and the ones for men are being expanded. We are hoping that that number will be doubled as well. So substantial effort, which was a gaping hole two, three and a half years ago. Some other efforts, coordinating all of the work of the employment services, there are a number of organizations, and you all have copies of this slide that give you the details of this, a number of organizations that provide employment services but very difficult to access. They began working together and provided access to employment and employment counseling and coaching. Access for phone service during the pandemic, this is, this started as transportation, but during the pandemic, we said, well, the issue really is telephonic access, and through coordinated response, we were able to gain access to 100 phones for people free of charge who needed to be able to access medical services during that time, during this effort. Coordination of services, the, there's been substantial progress, and Rockingham County has made the most progress of any county in the state on getting providers on the Unite Us platform, which provides coordination of services, and this has been done under the leadership of the New Hampshire Doorway. So bringing the New Hampshire Doorway, expanding access, and connecting all of the services so that people can cross-refer to each other and know when the referrals have been made, and it's not just this sort of knock on some doors and hope that somebody's going to respond, a much more coordinated approach. And then finally, a very substantial effort on community education, particularly in the area of what's often called adverse childhood experiences or ACEs, understanding that the roots of much addiction can be, can be traced to some issues of trauma and early experiences. So there's been education in schools, in mental health agencies, in the police department, in the fire department, all of the services, the recovery centers, on understanding trauma, understanding how to respond more effectively to trauma, and understanding the impact of trauma when we're dealing with people that are working hard in their own recovery. So there've been some very substantial results over the last couple of years, despite the fact that after the initial funding, the second round funding from Foundation for Seacoast Health and New Hampshire Charitable Foundation, all of the meetings were on Zoom. This is my first in-person meeting with council in three and a half years, I think since May of 2019. On the next slide, you'll see, this is just a very quick, I won't read all of these names, but you'll see that Mayor McEckern and city manager Conard, as well as Alan Gold from the EDC, Fire Chief, Police Chief, the school superintendents, the public health, the, let's see, the recovery center, the domestic violence center, the homeless shelter, basically all of the services that are in some way or another connected to helping to deal with the opiate crisis and provide assistance to people in recovery have all been involved in this. And it's been a really amazing collaboration among these groups. Where we are now, so just over the summer, we pulled everyone back together and said, so where are we? What's, what are our next steps here? And we worked with the group, we said, so what do we need to stop? What do we need to start? And what do we need to do differently? When it came to what we need to stop, there was nothing that we needed to stop. All of the members of the coalition said, we need to keep doing everything that we're doing, and in addition, we need to start doing a few things. We need to really build community awareness and reduce stigma and enhance those efforts. We need to look more closely at measuring our outcomes. How do we know that we're really having an impact? We need to address mental health issues and co-occurring disorders as well as substance use disorders, because we know that at least 50% of the people in recovery have co-occurring orders of substance use disorder and mental health disorders. We need to look at harm reduction. It's not enough just to send people off to treatment. There needs to be a pathway for people, to engage them in the process. We need to look for services for the homeless population, and this was very clearly articulated by Crossroads House. We specifically wanted to address youth and prevention, and in fact, there's another coalition that is developing specifically to look at youth and prevention services. And what we really want to do with the coalition is to build support for the next phase of our work. And that's really what I'm here to speak with you about tonight. The proposal is to establish the Greater Portsmouth, establish Greater Portsmouth as a recovery-ready community. What that means is that we look at the full range of services required, from prevention to harm reduction to treatment to long-term recovery support. One of the things we know is that treatment generally is not enough. There needs to be ongoing support in the community if people are really going to be able to pursue their recovery and reintegrate in an effective way. It's sort of falling off a cliff coming out of treatment if there are no services in the community to provide that kind of support. So becoming a recovery-ready community looks across that whole spectrum of services and also engages all of the services who are now members of the coalition and who are working together to achieve that. The proposal is to create this and to look for multi-year funding. One of the challenges, as you know, going year to year is you're never exactly sure if we're going to be able to build. We have learned that if we put support into this, we can achieve some results. We've also learned that it takes an investment to really be able to provide that kind of coordination. So the proposal has been to establish the Recovery Ready Community Coalition. The cost for that is $120,000 a year for two years, and what that provides is coordination of all of these coalition members. It provides for the training of the community and the education. It provides for project management of the task forces that are getting all of this work done. Coalition doesn't necessarily do everything. The work is carried out in task forces. There's a lot of management to make that happen. Also, to build our data and reporting, and to expand the community education, because we know that stigma reduction in a community is one of the big factors allowing all of these other things to proceed. The coalition has already received funding from the Foundation for Seacoast Health, $30,000, which is two years, but contingent upon the Portsmouth City Council participating in this. We have a proposal pending for the New Hampshire Opiate Abatement Fund for an additional $30,000, and our request to Portsmouth City Council is $60,000 for a two-year period that would ensure that this coalition is able to function and be stable over the next two years to really drive into implementation. So that is, that's our update, that is our request, and while I'm here, I also want to express our gratitude to all of the coalition members. There's been amazing work over the last few years. Our gratitude to the Foundation for Seacoast Health and New Hampshire Charitable Foundation, who funded most of this work, also to a private donor who individually made the recovery housing expansion possible, and to Portsmouth City Council for providing the initial funds that started this all off in May of 2019. So thank you for your support. We look forward to, would, would love to request additional support, and I'm happy to answer any questions or any other comments people may have.
Thank you, Larry. Are there any questions, Councilor Embardi?
Yeah, you said you have 24 beds. Is that enough?
No, it's not. We, I don't have the statistics from this year. Two years ago, there were 80 people that were eligible for recovery housing in Rockingham County that had to be placed outside of Rockingham County. I don't know what the statistic is for this year, but there's a, there's a sort of double thing. We want to expand the beds, but we also want to reduce the need. So somewhere, there's a happy spot, but 24 is not enough. It probably needs to be double or triple that. Yeah, thank you for that question. It's a great question.
Councilor Dutton?
Thank you, Your Honor. I recall when this began, so it's very impressive how far it's come. My question's actually for the city manager. Is this something, the funding, could that come from ARPA funds, or, I'm just wondering if that's a possibility?
ARPA is certainly a consideration. The, the timing, as I understand it, would be calendar year, for calendar year 2019. The timing, as I understand it, would be calendar year, for calendar year 23 and calendar year 24, which coincides with the fiscal year of the effort, correct?
Yes.
And not the city's fiscal year per se?
So it would be 30,000 January, and then 60,000 in June, and then another 30,000. How would we work that?
I think they're looking for 60,000 in January and 60,000 in July.
Got it.
To cover that next year.
Through calendar year 24.
Yeah, we're trying to juggle program year and calendar year. Right, so the 60,000 in January would cover basically quarters two and three of our program year, and then the 60,000 in July would cover that second year of operations.
So not 30,000 in January to June, put it in the budget for another, I guess we'll take this up, this will have something that we figure out with finance.
Yeah, it's the staggering of the program year versus the calendar year.
Okay.
Yeah. Councilor Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you so much for coming and presenting to us tonight. I really appreciate it. Some of these tasks are really, really large tasks, and they're going to take a long time to find reasonable solutions in our community. One that struck me that was interesting was the addressing the mental health and co-occurring illnesses. Has there been any effort to work with some of the larger groups that have been seeking funding and location for new mental health hospitals in the state? I know that there was an effort initially to locate one in Epping. There's now talk at the state level for potentially another facility. I think Portsmouth Hospital had been working on one. Has there been any coordination yet with those groups?
Have you worked with Seacoast Mental Health and some of the other community providers to integrate what we're doing into that?
Yeah.
Yeah, Larry, would you mind just repeating that? Because we could hear you, but the folks at home.
Yes. So they have not been directly involved, but members of the coalition include Seacoast Mental Health, the Public Health Department is part of it, the hospital, Portsmouth Regional Hospital is part of it, and the New Hampshire Doorway is part. So all of those coordinate with those efforts. So our expectation is that there will be coordination. Also, NAMI New Hampshire has been a big part of this, so they're engaged in the effort as well.
Thank you.
Great question, thank you.
Oh, Councilor Moreau?
Just a quick question. Because you are sort of claiming to assist Rockingham County as a whole, have you sought out any funds through the county itself?
So this particular coalition is specifically for Greater Portsmouth. So what we're defining is Portsmouth City, Newcastle, Rye, Greymond, and Newington. So those areas. The coalition members, some of them do serve all of Rockingham County, so their funding by implication does extend to the Seacoast, but the specific effort would be for the Greater Portsmouth area. And the Foundation for Seacoast Health funding is specifically for those five communities.
Thank you.
Councilor Bagley?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for the presentation. It's always good to see when we get an ask for funding that there are matching funds involved, so that's great to see. I've got a question for the city manager, kind of referencing the ARPA funds. It sounds like we're on a bit of a time crunch here, or am I misunderstanding that as far as that first tranche of funds that would be needed?
Right, and speaking with Larry and Mark and Alan, that is my understanding as well. There are some options on how to, if it were the will of the council to support the request, there are funding options that I could bring forth if that were what the council would be looking for.
So how about we do this? How about we vote to have a report back on those funding options for the next meeting, December 5th, in order to have a path forward to fund this, but also align with our obligation to citizen and citizen input to be able to speak on public comment around the options that we have. So if there was a motion to request from the city manager a report back on funding options available to meet the requests of the Greater Portsmouth Recovery Ready Community Coalition at the December 5th meeting, I think we'd accomplish that.
So moved.
Second?
Any more discussion on that, Councilor Bagley?
Just a follow-up, thank you, Your Honor. I understand the urgency to move forward, and I know the COVID recovery task force has a lot on their plate. However, I can't help but notice there's a lot of similar issues that they're dealing with, such as transportation, or phones, or things of that nature. So I think there might be a chance for some sort of collaboration, or maybe we could send this packet to that task force just so they can take a look at it.
I'm sure the task force is meeting tomorrow, I'm happy to bring that.
Thank you.
Any discussion on the motion on the table? And that's here from the city manager, funding options for us that we could act on December 5th, the next council meeting. We have the presentation, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Larry, thank you, Mark, thank you, Alan, for the work that you do. It's important work, and it would be remiss if I didn't make mention of former Councilor Wazembe and his efforts to bring this to the table, and all the work that I know he was incredibly passionate about to make this a possibility.
Huge help.
And to see it grow into this, and we had the pleasure to join a previous meeting to see just the brains in the room, myself excluded from that, but there was a lot of people, really passionate people, willing to do the work that's necessary and hope that, you know, the public can come out. You guys don't have to come back and sing for the supper on that in December 5th, but look forward to that vote as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, thank you all.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. All right, since we moved the whole thing up, I would await a motion to, for email correspondence to accept and place on file.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, going back, unless it was, not going back, the city manager?
Yes, sir.
So all your items that require action.
First up, Your Honor, is approval of a collective bargaining agreement with the Professional Management Association. There's a memorandum from City Labor Negotiator Tom Clausen, who is here this evening, happy to answer any questions you might have.
So I'd wait a motion to approve the proposed agreement as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Councilor Taber?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think that we're all aware that retention of our key staff is critical to being efficient in how we deliver our services, and I want to support this because I think it will stabilize and help us retain the skill people we need.
But agree, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up, oh, sorry, I handed myself. This is yours.
Appreciate it. Next up is approval of a second collective bargaining agreement for the Portsmouth City Employees Local 1386A Union.
I'd wait a motion to approve the proposed agreement as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Councilor Baylock?
Thank you, Your Honor. No, just as Councilor Taber said, I think it's important we protect and retain our city employees, and these are some of the hardest-working folks in the city, so we're supporting this.
Look forward to doing a lot of great work for us, another fantastic hazardous waste disposal day last Saturday. It's kind of hard to believe, 75 degrees in November, but you think like the November one is not going to be too hot in there, and that wasn't even the case. But I really appreciate all the work that they do. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Item number three is a request for restoration of involuntarily merged lots located at 880 Woodbury Avenue. And you will remember that at the July 11th meeting, the council voted to refer this request to the planning board and the assessor for a report back. And at the October 20th planning board meeting, the planning board voted to restore the property to its pre-merger status, in taking in the advice and counsel and recommendation of the city assessor. And both the city assessor and the planning director are available for questions should you have them.
I'd await a proposed motion to restore the property located at 880 Woodbury Avenue to its pre-merger status and direct the city GIS and assessing staff to update the zoning and tax maps accordingly.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Councilor Moreau?
I'll just state that a lot of times in the recent past, we've actually turned down many of these requests, but there really truly is a plan that shows that this was two separate lots, even though the description does describe it as one lot, and that was one of the key factors, along with all of the structures on the property being on one of those two lots, that makes this really a candidate to move forward.
And I would just take the time, I think that the process that we came up with the last council, having the assessor do a lot of the research, then bring it to the planning board, seemed to work out for this. It's not a judgment call, it's not something that, you know, if we like it or don't like it, it just puts it in the documents. If they're found, if they're findable, appreciate that, and it is, you know, keeps getting continued by the legislature. So if you do have, you know, merged lots and you like them unmerged, you have to start that process. But see no reason to go against the city assessor and the planning board in this, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Item four is a request for approval of the 2023 city council meeting calendar. That not only includes proposed council meetings, but also all of the budget-related meetings, updates, work sessions, listening sessions that we typically include. And it's important to note that additional work sessions could be scheduled at the call of the mayor, but this is the proposed schedule as the city clerk and the finance director and I have proposed for your consideration.
I would await a motion to approve the proposed 2023 meeting calendar as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion and/or amendments?
Thank you, Your Honor. Actually, motion that we amend the 2023 calendar by consolidating the four budget reviews, which are currently on May 9th, 10th, 11th, and 17th, to a single budget review day on Friday, May 12th.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
So, on a previous council, we did just this, where we had a city council retreat where we did all the budget reviews in one day. It seemed more effective than what was done this past year and what we're posing here. Because the way this is set up currently, on May 8th, we'll have the public hearing, which is a Monday, on the FY '24 budget. Then, May 9th, 10th, and 11th, there'll be presentations to us. Then again, the following week, Monday, the May 15th is a regular meeting. Then that following Thursday, Wednesday, May 17th, is another presentation on the budget. And then, May 18th is the public dialogue. And then fast forward to the following week, May 22nd, that Monday, would be the city council budget review. And that's a lot to ask of people for a three-week time period, and it just seems to be a more effective way to go about doing it. And everything I just listed, the times are all around the same, 6:00, 6:30, 7:00. If we moved it to a daytime, it would give more people the opportunity, who can't make these meetings, to actually be able to attend the meeting. In addition to that, anyone could watch the meeting on YouTube, they could follow up. But something that's changed since when we did that retreat is we did not have the city council public dialogue back then. So that's something which would remain separate at the 6:00, 6:30, whenever we decide to do it. And in addition to that opportunity to let the public speak, they would also be able to speak at the public hearing itself, which would remain at the normal public hearing time.
Any further discussion on this? I see Councilor Cook is formulating a question, but I see Councilor Moreau.
I guess I have no disagreement with that change, but I'd want input from city staff as to how that would affect their preparation and delivery and abilities.
It's interesting that the finance staff suggested that we bring something like this forward, and the staff would be supportive of consolidating this into one big budget session. So appreciate the amendment.
Any other questions? Councilor Cook?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have a question on that particular date, the May the 12th date. I'm not sure that this is scheduled that date, but there is a pretty prominent Portsmouth event that usually takes place on that date, and somebody would need to check it. TEDx Portsmouth usually is on the 12th, that second Friday. So I would think that we would lose a lot of residents that would want to participate. That's my only concern. We'd need to check the date.
I know it seems like we spread this out a lot, taking so many nights to do it, but I think it's a very important part of our job, and I actually like the way we do it now. I think it gives us time to prepare, it gives us time to give the city manager questions that we can have answers for those budget discussions, and I think it gives a little more space for interactivity with the department heads that they don't normally get. My concern would be if we pack it all into one day, we wouldn't have the chance for those questions to go back, go out from us and come back. We wouldn't have as much of a relaxed interchange to dig below some of the surface of things. So I myself like the way we're doing it now.
So as we're having this debate and conversation, the assistant mayor is not here, she's traveling back. Is there any reason we could or could not table this to the December 5th meeting to have a longer conversation and confirm dates with other people?
I think if I can propose a hybrid, for Kelly's sake, could we approve the council meetings separate and apart from the May budget work sessions? If we can get everything else going, and then we'll come back, we can table the budget work sessions.
So I think there's probably a decent conversation to be had. I'd like the assistant mayor to be a part of that conversation instead of coming back from Africa and saying, you know, we did what? And also, her voice is really important into this conversation and could say something we don't hear. I tend to, you know, I've done it three years one way, so I would be interested in the things that we might be missing by having department heads go back and forth and having separate nights so that we could be, you know, we could get them to answer questions that we might be jogged into memory and have them there in a way that we haven't had in the past. But the 12th seems to be a date that would be difficult to work.
I confirmed, it is TEDx that day, yeah.
So I'd wait a motion to approve the council calendar minus the budget work sessions.
So moved. Second. Do we need to rescind the motion on the floor?
Kelly?
So, the motion was to amend...
Was there a motion in a second?
Yeah, there was.
Yeah, there was a motion to amend the May 12th date, so...
I'm willing to withdraw my motion.
Okay.
And then approves. Okay, so that's withdrawn. So we will, I'd wait a motion to... Okay. So, that's withdrawn. So, we will, I'd wait a motion to approve the city council calendar minus the budget work session dates. So moved?
Second?
Request of the city manager, if you find a date that works better for consolidated date other than 12th, to propose that.
Sure.
Thank you.
So, we'll vote on this in one second, but Councilor Denton, maybe bring that up under your name at the December 5th meeting so that we can have that discussion and try to work to get a date. You know, I'm personally trying something new. But again, you know, it is a lot of opportunities to spread that out. But, all in favor as the motion is presented?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Item number five is a request for a drainage easement located at 140 West Road. Back in August, at the August Planning Board meeting, the Planning Board granted site plan approval for property located at 140 West Road. Site plan approval was required to permit the site alterations at that property. And since August, the property has been acquired and, as were the related site plan approvals. And as part of this approval process, the Planning Board approved a plan which directs stormwater from the public right-of-way over and across this property to existing city drainage infrastructure. And the Planning Board recommended that, as part of the approval, that this infrastructure be secured in an easement deed to the city, a drawing and language of which is included in your packet. Essentially amounts to 2,590 square feet, as approved by both Planning and Public Works and Legal has approved the language. And we would look for support for accepting and recording a drainage easement deed.
And make a motion that we authorize the city manager to accept and record a drainage easement deed in substantially similar form as the easement deed to, Road, Road to the West LLC contained in our packet.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Number six is a request for a temporary construction license located at 93 Pleasant Street. Back in January of 2022, the Planning Board granted site plan approval for the redevelopment of the four-story building, along with the construction of a new three-story building for property located at 93 Pleasant Street. That work is set to begin shortly because a construction mitigation and management plan was signed in late October, which identifies the temporary encumbrances for project-related work during the project's construction. Long story short, the project proponent is seeking to use 1,200 square feet of sidewalk along Court Street that abuts the property for 517 days to begin December 1st of this year through April 30th of 2024. The idea would be to enable the owner to construct the project and provide a safe perimeter. Signage will be required to redirect pedestrians to the other side of the street where the sidewalk will be open. And the owner will be required to apply for separate flagging permits when deliveries encumber Court Street. The total license fee for this request is $31,020. And Legal and Planning have both reviewed and approved the form of the attached license in your packet.
So, I'd wait a motion to, that the city manager be authorized to execute and accept the temporary construction license for the term of December 1, 2022 to April 30th, 2024, as requested.
So moved.
Second? Any discussion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Is there any opportunity for the sidewalk to not be encumbered, like having scaffolding over the sidewalk in that area?
The sidewalk is far enough away from where any building would occur. That scaffolding really isn't an option in this particular instance. And there, and as there are sidewalks on both sides of Court Street, there's an ability to support and relocate pedestrians in that area.
Okay. Councilor Cook?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have a question on what the limitations are with regard to flagging licenses and closure of the street for deliveries. I know that this does impact some residential homes along the street, and there's also a business not too far from there.
Right. And I, I haven't had to answer that question, so, and I'm looking at the city attorney, who I'm sure has not had to answer that question yet. But there is a buffer notification and review as part of these permit requests. And it's called for in the CMMP, right?
So, just following up on that question, what does that mean for flagging and street closures? Is that as a part of this construction? We're approving the permit.
This is just the license to encumber the sidewalk. When they need to seek a flagging permit, that will be a separate ask.
Okay. Separate ask to close the street, separate ask for flagging on this. This is so along the length of the rock wall and that they can close that down for construction and move.
Correct.
But it's not, it doesn't extend past the sidewalk, correct?
Correct.
So it's simply the sidewalk?
Correct.
Not the road, nothing in the road, no trucks parked along the road next to the sidewalk?
No, because there's no parking in that area. It's due now.
Okay. Councilor Blaylock?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have been working on this project on the HTC, and I do know that that rock wall is part of the project. I know we've required them to number each rock, and if they take it off, so they can replace it back as kind. So I think that answers some of the questions about the scaffolding and stuff like that.
We might be able to cut the date down if we're not numbering each rock. All right, sorry. So, any other questions or comments on this? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. The last item under my name is a request for reallocation of public arts trust funds from the Foundry Place Public Art Project to the Bohanko Park Sculpture Garden. This is an effort as part of the Portsmouth 400th Initiative. And you will recall that back in 2018, the city council approved and appropriated a sum in the amount of $150,000 into the Public Arts Trust for the purpose of purchasing artwork for the Foundry Garage. That project has since been completed, with $21,100 remaining in the trust, with no purpose or any further need for funding for that project. So I would like to request that the council approve the reallocation of those remaining funds in the amount of $21,100 to be used for the Sculpture Garden. It's really an effort to provide city funds and city support for this important initiative that will hopefully yield several sculptures in the Bohanko Gateway Park.
I'd wait a motion, it's a long one, to find that the Bohanko Park Sculpture Garden is a public art purpose consistent with the public art ordinance of the city, and the council approved the reallocation of the remaining Foundry Art Funds in the amount of $21,100 in no sense from the Public Arts Trust to be used for the Bohanko Gateway Park Sculpture Garden. We had further moved that the city manager is authorized to take any and all steps necessary to accomplish the reallocation of the foregoing trust funds.
So moved.
Second? Any questions on this? I've got a small one. On the trust funds, is this something that, I'm remembering something of the, there was money that was allocated trustees of the trust funds. Is there anything that we need to be aware of when it's, is this money that's overseen by that committee?
It is overseen by that committee. And this language and the way this motion was crafted was to direct the trustees of the trust, per your vote, if you were to support this, to make this money available.
Okay. And the way that we did it last time, we allocated that money, but we didn't specifically direct them to make them. So this is indifference, or this is changed from the previous, I'm forgetting what that vote was even on, but the, it failed the trustees because we didn't have this language. So this language, and why it's such a long motion, is, take care of that. Okay. Any other questions or comments? I think this is a great initiative, and I know that they're out fundraising, I think using some of the money that we do have for this, as a way to signal to other donors and to the committee in general that this is something that is valued and valuable to the city.
Out of the eight people on Zoom, four I know are interested in this item in particular. Thank you for tuning in on Zoom.
All in, do we need a roll call vote on this?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, onto the consent agenda. With one item, the, I'd wait a motion to adopt the consent agenda. So moved?
Second?
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Cheese Louise, good luck. That's the request. For people watching at home, they might not be following on the agenda. This was the sign for Cheese Louise. We've gotten through the presentations and written communications, so on to councilor items. And it is my pleasure to bring forth the approval of an employment agreement with city manager Kennard. I would wait a motion to approve the proposed employment agreement as presented.
So moved.
Second?
Fast on that. Any discussion? Councilor Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just, you know, I think we all know that the city manager started probably the worst possible time with a global pandemic hitting. And, you know, we faced a lot of challenges as a city, and I just want to commend her leadership getting us through that pandemic. Not just her, obviously, but there was a great deal of leadership involved in that. And since I've been on the council, I have been continued to be extremely impressed with the leadership that the city manager shows. And I've had multiple city workers comment to me that, you know, they really appreciate her leadership as well. There's a lot of city employees, and she makes an effort to get to know as many of them as possible. And I really commend her leadership style.
Councilor Bagley? Councilor Blaylock?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll just repeat some of Councilor Bagley's sentiments. It's been a pleasure to work with city manager Kennard so far. She's had to handle a great amount of adversity and unforeseen circumstances, and she can handle those with grace. And I'm very impressed by her supporting this contract.
Thank you, Your Honor. One of the best things that the prior city council did that I was on in 2019 around this timeframe was hire you.
Councilor Moreau?
I'd just like to say thank you for signing a five-year contract. And staying, so we get to keep her. Very exciting.
Any other comments? Council Taber? No? I usually speak and usually got something at the end there.
All right, well. I'm in violent agreement with whatever he wants to say.
It's a, it's, it's been fun serving with our city manager on the dais. Both, one was, the whole world was locked down in COVID, and we were just boxes on a Zoom screen. You know, that was tough. It was tough for a lot of reasons. It was tough to bring folks together. And we were all in a fishbowl, and I think it was a difficult time in addition to just the general difficulty that, that the entire world went through. I've always been impressed with the city manager's ability to listen intently, to, to really look to get action. If you've ever been in a meeting with her, you feel completely underprepared because she's taken about eight pages of notes, and you're thinking like, man, I should have written some of this down. But it's not enough to take notes or to be attentive. It's to, it's to, when you get that information, to act, to follow up, to think strategically. And I will say that I've been excited for the time that we have been able to serve the city of Portsmouth. But I'm more excited about what you're going to be in another three years and five years. I think this is a job that has a lot of cumulative, you gotta, you gotta know a lot to do this job incredibly well. And you will continue to grow because you're a curious person that really enjoys this job. And we're really, really, I'm thinking this vote's going to go in your favor. So, I'm excited to, the city of Portsmouth to have you for another five years, so.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Karen.
Thank you.
Next up, appointments to be considered. No vote on this, but David Rayham to the zoning board of adjustment. I simply just want to, I'd like to, happy to hear anybody's questions on this. You know, come to me before that, at the next vote. But I had the, I had the chance to go through the zoning board process when I wanted to get a deck. I still haven't gotten this deck built, but I have it approved. And it's, I don't live up to the standard often, but to be a good chair, you have to facilitate everybody else. You have to take a step back from talking, and you have to be fair. And the things that have struck me, maybe, you know, somewhat surprisingly so, is the idea that Mr. Rayham would be anything but fair. That was my experience with him, and I think that you need people that are able to put the person in front of them in a bubble all of their own. And that's what I felt like when I talked to the ZBA before. And that's why I asked, and he's agreed to put his name forth. So, I'm excited by that, but for the next, the next meeting. We have appointments to be voted.
Mayor, Council Moreau's ready.
Oh, Council Moreau.
I'd just like to state for the record, I will be recusing on the vote at our next meeting. I think a lot of people know that he is indeed my husband. And we did serve both, each on our separate boards for a long time. And I know when I was previously going to run for city council back in 2017, I actually made a point of going and speaking to the city attorney at the time about whether or not I could even serve as a city councillor with him being the chair of the ZBA. And it was a definite that was not a problem whatsoever. So, I had investigated that previously. I did not specifically this time when he made the decision to do this, but I have done that, and that was what I was told. So, just to make that clear and on the record.
Sure. I mean, in some alternative universe where we already wanted to serve on the ZBA, you know, you know, she, we don't, I wish, we could talk more about the city with each other, but there's, you know, if somebody has the ability to serve and do that rationally, it doesn't, it shouldn't be held against what they, who they're married to.
I am a little sad to lose him on trash night, though. I have to put out the trash now.
Mayor? I'd also like to speak in support of David Ruhm because, as chair of the HTC, the fire on State Street that took down two buildings and damaged the Times Building, there was a very large effort to tear down that building. It went, it was contested, our decision at the HTC was contested. It went to the, to the zoning board of adjustment. And it's something that the board of adjustment doesn't really know about how to be, to be an HTC person. And he handled that tremendously well. And as a result of his leadership, that building is still preserved. Unfortunately, it has not been preserved or rehabilitated yet, but it will be. And I just respect his leadership there, so he has my vote.
Well, we don't get to vote tonight, so we have to say all those nice things.
Next time.
But appointments to be voted, the appointment of Stuart Shepherd to the Conservation Commission, the appointment of, I guess I should do this in a motion. I'd move to appoint Stuart Shepherd to the Conservation Commission, Brian Gibb as an alternate to the Conservation Commission, Assistant Mayor Kelly and Mary Lou McKellane to the DOT Public Advisory Committee for the Route 1 bypass. The, Ann Wideman as a regular member of the Economic Development Commission, Charles Doleak, Kristen Peterson, Emma Stratton, Tom Watson, and Lawrence Yurden to the Task Force to Study Private Public Historical Archive.
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Any discussion? I appreciate your willingness to serve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I'm pretty excited about this next one. So we have a vintage Christmas shuttle coming back to the city of Portsmouth. I did no work to get this done, but somehow I get to put it under my name. But it's gonna be through December 3rd, and it's gonna be operating on the, the weekends, as I understand it, through the 18th.
That's correct. Right.
And it's gonna be doing a loop that is, it is in the packet, running around through downtown. You know, I would love to think that, you know, in a world where we might not all, you know, park downtown, you know, this could be a trial for something that we, you know, we do longer term to get people into the foundry. I know it doesn't seem, I mean, it, walking is all relative, so if we can make it really easily accessible from the foundry, get people downtown, if we can think of, you know, potentially extending this, this loop in the future. But we'll be looking at ridership numbers, and, you know, hopefully people take advantage of that. So I want to thank the City Manager for going out and making this, this happen for us. That's it, just, that was the verbal.
I plan on riding it.
I plan on riding it as well. You know, I'd love to drive it, but I think you need a, you need a commercial license for that. Don't have that. All right. Council Tabor, you're up.
Oh, thanks, Your Honor. I just wanted the council to be aware of a survey that we want to put out in the field around community power, which, as you know, is our effort to aggregate city electricity demand from all of us and use that to buy cheaper and greener electricity. The part, a partner we have in this is the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, and we would join 19 other cities and towns. Some of those will start in May. We're looking at starting in September. And we wanted to do the survey for two reasons, to get information on the service options, the tiers of service that we can give, particularly around those who want to and are willing to pay for renewable energy 100%. And we also just want to engage residents. One of our goals on the Energy Advisory Committee is keep engaging residents so that when, assuming the council votes to move ahead, when we notify residents, it's not a surprise. They understand it, and they know what it is. So we're scheduling this for December. Logistically, it may fall in January, just because if we find out getting this out in the midst of Christmas, the timing wouldn't work, we'd slide it to January. That's it.
Thank you, Council Tabor. Council Denton.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to start by thanking this council for earlier this year, increasing the disabled veterans' tax credit to the full amount of $4,000, and thanks Roseanne and her office for helping a friend of mine recently. Due to the PACT Act now allowing certain cancers to become, give a presumption that if you got that cancer while deployed, then it would be covered. A friend that several of you got to meet at the Veterans Day ceremony, who's younger than all of us, she is now, thanks to the PACT Act, 100% disabled. She went to Roseanne's office, and they did a great job helping her with her taxes. So that's a $4,000 tax credit, which she's now eligible for. And these are two of the other large tax credits in front of us. I'm gonna make each motion, and if it's second, I'll speak to them. I move the draft resolution increasing the optional veterans' tax credit from $500 to $750, be brought back with any necessary changes to the city council for readoption before March 31st, 2023.
Second.
So this is the more common tax credit that a lot of people think of. It's, bear with me one moment here. So it's the optional veterans' tax credit. The way how this one works is, there's a naval legislation out there that allows me to supply these to go up to $750 and, for residential property for certain veterans. For the longest time, as long as I've known of it, it's been $500. The veterans that this applies to, it's not if you're deployed in a combat theater, it's if you serve during a time of deployment. A great example that I'd like to use is my father, he's not a New Hampshire resident. He was drafted during Vietnam, he didn't deploy to Vietnam. But under New Hampshire law, he would qualify for this tax credit, although he did not deploy to Vietnam. It's not a conflict of interest for me to be voting on this, although I would qualify for having deployed to Iraq. I don't own residential property. With that said, the other tax credit, the all veterans' tax credit's a little more confusing, but both of these tax credits, they need to be reauthorized prior to March 31st due to a change in the naval legislation. So regardless if you want to increase it to $750 or keep it at $500, it will have to be readopted. March 31st is just the date which any tax credits have to be adopted by. And the reason why I'd like to have it brought back at $750 is, we could always go down, but if it comes to a public hearing on this, you can't then increase it at the public hearing. If that makes sense. So all we're asking for here is this to be sent essentially to city staff to review, to see if any changes have to be made to it, and then for it to be brought back for readoption at a date undetermined before March 31st.
Thank you, Council Denton. Any questions on that? Well, it's a, there's a, just had Veterans Day, you know, there's a, there's a lot that's said. This is an opportunity to, to put our money where our mouth is, and the ink isn't even dry, I think, on the, the increase of the $750 versus the original $500 of the state. So I'd be proud to support this with you to make sure that we're leading in the state when it comes to our veterans and what they can expect us to do, as much as we can is allowed by the, the state of New Hampshire. So. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll make the second motion here. Move the draft resolution expanding the all veterans' tax credit eligibility to those that currently serve, be brought back with any necessary changes to the city council for readoption before March 31st, 2023.
Second.
So, again, the one we just voted on, the optional tax credit, that's one that most veterans think of, and it was actually pretty divisive for years because there were veterans who didn't qualify for it, and they thought that wasn't fair. Back in 2017, I was able to bring forward the all veterans' tax credit, and that fills in the gaps. So essentially, any veteran who is honorably discharged, having served 90 days or so, qualifies for the all veterans' tax credit. And when I brought that forward back in 2017, there was no idea of knowing how much money it would cost the city. I came up with my own numbers, then the same manager did, to see what it could potentially cost, and we even had to vote on it twice after it vote passed the first time. Once the council voted for it, changed its vote, brought it back a second time, and someone else changed the vote, and it passed. This here's different in two regards. One, the naval legislation has since changed. It used to be locked at $500, now it's tied to the optional tax credit. So whatever the optional tax credit's set on in that first resolution, this will be tied to that. Second, this changes the eligibility to all those that currently serve. So if you're in the National Guard, or if you're on active duty, if you've served 90 days in active duty, then you would qualify for this. And just like the other resolution, it needs to be readopted due to that change in state law. And all we're asking for here is to send it essentially to city staff to review and bring it back to us for a vote prior to March 31st, 2023.
Any further discussion? Thanks, Council Denton. Oh, Council Bagley.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you, Council Denton, to bring this forward. Doing a little research on this, less than 1% of US citizens are currently serving in the armed forces. And I'd venture to say that, you know, even though Portsmouth is a Navy town, and we had the Air Force base for many years, you know, our population percentage is probably not much different than that. So I think a lot of those, a lot of us that aren't or haven't served in the military think that the percentage is, is higher than it is. But we do have all volunteer armed forces, and currently there are less than 1% of Americans serving in those armed forces.
Thank you, Council Bagley. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Council Denton. Council Moro.
Um, thank you. I'm going to make a motion slightly different than what's actually in the packet, just for warning.
All right.
I'd like to motion that we move to refer Phase 2 of our ADU amendments to the Planning Board for Recommendation and to bring recommendation, recommended amendments back to the city council for first reading.
Second.
And the reason I made that change is, you know, the assisted living was kind of something that some people brought to our attention, that there were several areas in our city that we allow, like multifamily homes, whether it's four units, five units, whatever the size units. So we were trying to equate the assisted living definitions of the size of the units and just allow them in those, in those different districts. But clearly, there's been a lot of pushback to do that. I don't think it's a change that has to happen right now. I don't think there's anyone pounding on our door, so I'd rather just put it on the back burner for now and concentrate on the ADU, which I think is much more important, that we keep our focus on that. So that's my reason for making the change. The ADUs that, changes that we've made, we have been, let's see, we started public input back in July. We've had at least four meetings on, at land use of the ADUs, and there have been many, many changes to track through. I think what we have now is a complete sort of rework of the law. We now have ADU units that if you are going to do one completely within your house, so a floor of your home, the basement of your home, and you want to create an ADU there, you can basically do it through an administrative approval. And that's, and it was, or it can be an accessory structure that's already existing, as long as it stays within 600 square feet or smaller. So we basically took out garden cottages, and now we've kind of equated everything to being either an attached or a detached assisted dwelling unit. So we kind of took out a whole section and worked it into and put it in there. We've reworked it to have sort of what all ADUs have to be, you know, what specific attached and detached, and then when we have it, also what any architectural requirements might be. And I say requirements, they're really, we call them guidelines, so that you're within these guidelines. That way, it makes it a little bit clearer when there's an administrative approval. We were asked to have a way for there to be on permitted houses for a way to be noticed. So we also added in the same notice that we do for demolition review. So there would be signs at the property, clear view of everyone, so that they can see that there is an application in for an accessory dwelling unit. And then that way, if somebody had an issue and there was an approval, administrative approval, they could then appeal that to the ZBA. We also have, were asked to make sure that the direct butters were actually mailed notice, so we've added in that the language that would be on that sign would then be put into, you know, a letter and notice, whatever you want to call it, and mailed just to the immediate boundary of butters of those properties that are applying. You know, we've tried to really sort of make sure, drain, things that, you know, have happened in the past have been addressed, and that hopefully it's streamlined in a way that hopefully, once this goes through, and if there are future changes that make it better, I'd say that's all great. But our community housing navigator that we're in the process of trying to hire, their first duty is gonna be to take this zoning ordinance as amended and to be able to give us a handbook that we'll be able to then, you know, basically have a checklist for a homeowner saying, okay, is this your property? Then this is, you know, what you need to follow, so that they don't have to truly understand the language of the zoning. We can put it into plain English and make it easier for someone to understand and to get things put through. So those are kind of the broad strokes of the changes that we've made. But if you guys have specific questions, I'm happy to answer them. But there will still be, at least at minimum, a public hearing, and possibly more than one public hearing, and possibly a work session at the planning board level before it would then come back here to city council for a public hearing as well.
Thank you, Council Moro. All right, Council Bagley, go down the line here.
Thank you, Your Honor. And first, I want to thank the members of the Land Use Committee for their work here. I know they put a lot of time and effort into this. I can't support the amendments as written. I think this creates a lot of new hurdles. There's quite a bit in here of design language where it sounds like we're, we're creating the HTC throughout the, the rest of the city. For instance, if you take these new requirements, if you have a Bestow siding, you're required to use that. It's not the neighborhood, it's, it's your house, the materials you have to use. If you have copper gutters, you would have to use copper gutters on the ADU. It would actually be cheaper in some cases for the owner of the main building to tear down their existing copper gutters and put aluminum up for both the ADU and the main building. There are extensive and, I think, unreasonable parking requirements for off-street parking. I just feel that this, as written, will actually have a chilling effect on the creation of ADUs in our city. And I think we need to approach it from the standpoint of how to get to yes. This feels like it's, it's heavily biased towards people that don't want ADUs in the community. And I will say, and I ran on this, and I'll keep banging this drum, but the number one thing we can do to let people that are in economically challenging situations, in family situations that are challenging, to stay in this community is to build and encourage ADUs. And that's for several reasons. ADUs is where a community makes its commitment to affordable housing and the environment. It's the least disruptive way to increase affordable housing, infill in areas where we have water and sewer. As many people know, most of the most desirable neighborhoods in our city, Atlantic Heights, the South End, Little Harbor Neighborhood, Islington Creek, they're illegal to build today because of our zoning requirements. We can't replicate our most desirable, in some people's opinions, neighborhoods because of our zoning regulations. And I just feel that this goes too far towards creating those types of regulations that's going to discourage the creation of ADUs. So I'd like to recommend that we have a work session as a council to take the good work that the committee's done, but to maybe tweak it so that we are ensuring that we're going to create new ADUs. The data since 2017, when the state legislator passed the law, is we've created, I believe, 30 ADU units, which represents 0.05% of housing units in the city. If we were to do 20 times as many ADUs, they would still only represent 1% of housing units in the city. So I think we're a little too concerned with, with aesthetics, with, with off-street parking. I think we need to take a harder look at this. This is going to be the easiest way we can create affordable housing, and I think this is where we really need to take some risks and try and lower the barrier of entry to ADUs. Right now, I believe it costs between $20,000 to $30,000 just to bring forward an application, an application that might be denied. And that's one of the fundamental problems with zoning, is it favors developers, it favors rich people, because they will have the money to go to the boards and to successfully argue for these variances and, and for all these regulations. But the people that need these ADUs the most, who are experiencing health challenges or, or family problems where they want to, their mom and dad to come live with them, or, or their, their children just went through a divorce and has two kids and wants to come home and live in Portsmouth, and if they can just build a small cottage or, or put a, you know, an attic ADU in, they can make that happen. I think we need to lower the barrier to entry on ADUs, and, and I don't think this legislation, while a lot of time and effort went into it, I don't think it accomplishes that.
Council Bagley, Council Lemberty.
I'm not sure I agree with Council Bagley, but, because I think that this is a step toward one of our major goals that we have. I don't think that asking a, a person to build a I don't think that asking a person to build a ADU that is compatible with the existing structure is, I don't, I seriously doubt that we'd, they'd have to put special gutters on an ADU that they had on their house. The Historic District Commission doesn't require that. I just, I think it's a step in the right direction. It may need tweaking, but I want to commend that all the people who worked on this, the committee and the residents who've participated, and the Planning Board.
Thank you. Council Lombardi? Council Beilock?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll just say that me, Councilor Moreau, myself, the other members of the Land Use Committee, Beverly Zandt, we've had outside counseling, we've had immense public output as well and engagement. We've had tons of meetings. It's a little disappointing not to hear any input sooner than this, because this was all public information we've been working on. But our goal is to lower the barrier, and I think we've been working very hard at doing that. I think this does lower the barrier. Right now, you know, if I needed to build an ADU for my mother in my backyard, it's very confusing language, it's 30 grand, like you said, you know, so I think something needs to be done about that. As Council Lombardi said, I'm familiar with the HCC. Yeah, that's not the way things really work. You know, we're not going to make you put copper gutters on your ADU, and I think that's a little misleading to say that that's what we're going through with this, these improvements here. But I think the work we've done here significantly lowers the barrier, gets closer to helping the client understand, and just makes it easier, more, increasing the house, getting closer to increasing the housing stock in Portsmouth.
Thanks, Council Beilock. Anybody else? Council Denton and then Council Moreau. Oh, sorry, Council Tabor, sorry.
I agree with Council Bagley on one thing, that ADUs are absolutely the best way to add density with little environmental footprint, acceptable to the neighbors, and create affordable housing. The granddaddy of this is California, neighborhoods that were built in the 60s where people, children can no longer afford to buy a house in their old neighborhood. That's been made possible by ADUs. They can return to their neighborhood. I did want to ask Council Moreau, though, about the architectural design standards for the detached ADUs. I completely get it for the attached ADUs, but how did that, what was the origin of that? And I know that we had talked about an aspiration of some standard designs for ADUs, so that a person could come in and say, you know, one of these standard designs, I can get up and going quickly and affordably.
Yep, nope. And part of what I was about to say is, so one of the balancing acts of these is that we are, keeping in mind, ADUs are for single-family neighborhoods, so you're only allowed to build a single-family home. So the idea of keeping any detached or attachment looking like the regular building is so that they look like they go together, so that we're keeping that single-family neighborhood fabric, even though the density has been increased. So that's the reason behind it. If you actually look at the purpose of it, we're not doing this in neighborhoods where you can already have a duplex, or you can already have three units, or you can already have multiple units. We're doing this in neighborhoods that are single-family neighborhoods, and we're trying to keep them looking like single-family neighborhoods. We don't want to make them look like they're more dense, but we want to allow them to be more dense. That was the whole fabric behind it. One of the major, major things that came out of the survey and stuff we did was parking issues, and that people had major questions. So we did make this parking slightly more stricter than our actual parking, although I'm a true believer that we need to rework our entire parking area of our zoning, but that's a whole nother conversation and a whole nother six months. So for now, we thought we would just make it, because we do round up in our parking, that we would round up and put it into the ADU to allow for more parking based off of the square footage of the units. So yeah, I hope that answers some of your questions. Happy to answer any others.
Would you like to say anything else?
No, I really got to say everything in answering this question.
Council Cook?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you to the Land Use Committee for all the hard work that went into this. I do have a question around parking. Specifically, why are we strict about parking for an accessory dwelling unit in a neighborhood that has ample street parking that's available to residents for parking? And the reason I'm asking this is that it seems to me that the market would decide who would rent an accessory dwelling unit if it didn't have additional parking, based upon people, someone's willingness to park on the street or just not have a car.
I fully agree with your comments. The hard part is, is that we don't differentiate from neighborhood to neighborhood. So you might have a neighborhood that doesn't have an abundance of on-street parking, and you might have another one that does. So we have to account for, no matter which neighborhood you're in, whether it's a tight neighborhood that has very tight parking, or if it's a wide-open neighborhood that has lots of it. Unfortunately, we have to, and this is my issue with our parking ordinance, right, that we really need to start looking at different areas of our town and having our zoning not be a one-shoe, one-size-fits-all kind of parking arrangement. So for now, right, this was the easiest way to increase the little bit of the parking, because people are weary that you're going to put in an ADU, it's going to have two bedrooms, it's going to have two cars, plus the single-family home. So there was a lot of concern behind parking, and this was our way of addressing the public's needs there.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just, one quick follow-up. So I live in one of those neighborhoods that has a lot of housing without parking. In fact, my next-door neighbor, one of my butters to my property, has a home, a single-family home, without any parking, and that's pretty common in my neighborhood. And so really what happens in my neighborhood, it's a market decision whether or not you want to own a home without parking. Why don't we just let it be a market decision throughout the city?
Sorry, just, so I understand your question, to allow no parking, or?
Yes, that's my question, is that, you know, that we have single-family units throughout the, single-family homes throughout the city that don't have parking in certain neighborhoods. And so my question is, is why would we have such strict requirements for an ADU for parking off-street if we have neighborhoods with single families that don't even have parking? Wouldn't that just be a market decision that would weed out buyers or renters?
So I, that question could be addressed to Council Moreau, but I have some thoughts on this. And the reason I would imagine that this needs to be in here is because we wanted to pass the Planning Board and then to come back here and have people speak in favor of it and not yell at us and say, we're not going to change this because you're going to allow this, and since you've not required any parking, it's going to overwhelm my street parking. Like, all of this is, and reading through it, it's all an effort to give people the confidence that they, if they follow these rules, they get an ADU. They don't have to go hire a lawyer, hire a consultant, just for the chance that they get an ADU after $30,000 down, down, down the road. So to make more things that are actionable, you know, if you ask the former city attorney how big the zoning board, or the zoning book was when it got here, he uses his fingers. It's like, it was this big. And how big is it now? It's this big. You know, there's a lot that, you know, a pastime in Portsmouth is telling other people what they can do with their property. So it might not be perfect, and certainly it might not be the example of, you know, everything that we want out of the best housing supply, you know, what you would do in that. I do think by streamlining and making some of the decisions, say, you could get administratively, you could make this happen, it's going to give more people confidence. And the question I'd pose to those that are detractors, what we're doing right now ain't working. We got 30, you know, since this was approved, so we got to try a different tack. That might be putting more rules, rules that can be changed in the future, but putting, you know, more guardrails around this so that people have more confidence around, you know, going to ask for an ADU in the first place, and sometimes not even have to go before a board to be able to do it administratively. So it's far from perfect, but that's, you know, we are the, it gets past things that are perfect on the national level, even on the state level. We have to always do things that are imperfect, and this would be one of those things that I think would be worth trying to see if we can get more people to put more, you know, take a chance and put an ADU in. Council Bagley?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. And to Council Beilock's point, after watching the last subcommittee meeting, I did reach out to the city to see if it was permissible for me to speak, because I didn't want to violate the right-to-know law. But there is a little bit of confusion, and I didn't get an answer until 5:30 this evening. So I didn't have a chance to, to reach out, because I wanted to be very cognizant to not violate that. But I had a misunderstanding of how that law works, and I thought it improper, and I still think it's improper for, for city councilors to, to go to other committees that they're not on and speak unless they've been invited to speak. And maybe that's an entirely wrong way to look at it, but that's, that's how I look at it. I do have a question, and sorry to put the, is the planning director available? ADUs under 750 square feet, how many of those have been approved since 2017?
Let's give her a moment to come on, if you don't mind. Beverly, I don't know if you heard the question. Council, would you mind repeating the question for Beverly?
Yes. Roughly, how many ADUs under 750 square feet have been approved since 2017? And I apologize for not sending you this a question in advance.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question? When I was coming on, I got disconnected, I'm sorry.
Yes. Roughly speaking, how many ADUs under 750 square feet have been approved since 2017 when the Navy legislation was passed?
I would have to bring that back to you. I don't know under two, to, under that amount. I would say, since I've been here, many of the ones that I've seen are pretty close to 750 square feet. That seems to be the sweet spot for most of them. We have two going, in fact, this week, and one is, I think, 650, and the other one is seven, about 748 or something. So, but I could get that data to you.
All right, I appreciate that. And then, secondly, for the architectural design standards, could you comment on gutters, if they would be required as copper? I believe that had come up previously, but maybe I'm misremembering. And then, secondly, who would determine, for instance, that the siding material, texture, and profile matches the existing building?
So for most of the ADUs, they're still required with a conditional use permit. There is one exception, there's two exceptions to that. There is attached ADUs, which would be completely contained within an existing structure, or a, what used to be a former garden cottage, a detached, which there would be no expansion proposed. It would essentially be in an existing structure, outstructure, and that it would be converted to an ADU. In those two instances, the planning director would make the call based on, you know, looking at the rules for the architectural, and they are standards. But for all others, any expansion, any new construction, would have to go to the Planning Board who would be reviewing that. With regard to the gutters, I believe, I'm looking at the architectural standards, I believe it said that where those features are provided, they should be similar. But if they're, they're not required to be provided, but where there is a feature provided, they should be similar. I don't know if it actually speaks to gutters, though. It does speak to other, I don't know if a gutter is an architectural feature, but it does speak to other, more discernible architectural features.
And then, just walking around my neighborhood, there's, there's quite a few houses that have a best-of siding. So if I had a house with a best-of siding, how would I comply with this requirement if I wanted to build a external ADU?
You would want the exterior materials to be the same or similar in color and compatible. So I would say, we wouldn't require that you put asbestos siding, but it would need to be similar in terms of the appearance and compatible, same color, probably the same vertical structure, if that's what the structure looks like, and similar materials.
So, so when we use the term siding, material, texture, and profile, that seems very specific to me. And then it also says on the side where we use that term that these standards are requirements, shall, not guidelines, should. So when I see changes like this, and, I mean, there's, I don't know, 25 requirements that have been added, it just doesn't feel like to me we're streamlining. It feels like we're, we're making the code more cumbersome, and perhaps I'm just being dense, but I, I feel like the code's more cumbersome. I actually had an individual come up to me earlier this week and say they're excited for this to be passed, because they, they thought they were going to get a lot more business to help guide people through this process.
Are there any other questions for Beverly? Thank you, Beverly.
Thanks, Beverly.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the council? All in favor of the motion as presented? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Council Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. Parking, Traffic, and Safety Committee Action Sheet in minutes of the October 6, 2022 meeting. Sample motion would be moved to post, excuse me, moved to postpone until December 5, 2022 City Council meeting.
Second.
And these are the meeting minutes that would end the neighborhood parking program, so we're going to not approve them until after the program ends, I believe, on December 4.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And second is the holiday parking enforcement, and move to establish holiday parking enforcement from Saturday, December 17, 2022, through Monday, December 26, 2022, for payment of parking. Time limits would still be in effect.
Second.
And what this does is, from those dates of Monday, December, I'm sorry, Saturday, December 17 through Monday, December 26, you would not be required to pay for your parking, because we won't be issuing tickets to people that didn't pay for their parking. However, it is what we term a parking enforcement holiday. So if you accidentally pay for your parking, you can't get a refund.
Okay. Are we noticing this in any way? Like, on the signs, like, we'll say, like, no, you don't have to pay today?
No. So we, this, when we went to the stay and pay, and I may get some of the details wrong, but reading the previous notes, the first year that we tried to change the electronic meters for holiday parking required a third party to come in and do that, and it caused a, let's just say it didn't go very smoothly. So it's become the feeling of the city that the best way to handle this is to kind of push this out through the council meeting, possibly an article in the newspaper, out on social media, on the city website, so that locals know that they don't have to pay during this week. But if you were, say, coming up from Boston, you'd have no idea, and you'd continue to pay for parking. So it's a bit inelegant, but it does two things. One, it gives locals the chance to not pay for parking, and two, it doesn't hurt city revenues that much, because people from Boston are going to continue to pay for parking.
I mean, unless they, like, have a experience where they're, they found out they got duped, I don't know, it just seems like we should have signs that go up on, if we can't change the meter to turn it off, we should put signs on all these things to say, you're not paying for it. It seems kind of disingenuous to have parking that's free, except if you didn't watch this council meeting tonight.
I don't disagree that it's not ideal, but we've kind of looked at it over a course of years, and by we, I mean, city staff and previous councils.
If I can weigh in, and I'm looking at Stephanie, who can nod yes or no, it's my understanding we post parking holiday enforcement on our website, and we put that information in the city newsletter, and we tweet it, and we put it on the normal channels of communication.
Maybe the chambers, too.
We could do that. We could do whatever this council would like us to do.
Well, I guess I'd like to see it, because I'm a, I would love to live in a world where everybody in Portsmouth knows what we do, you know, and it would make my life a whole lot easier, make everybody, well, maybe a whole lot harder, actually. But there's going to be a lot of people, Portsmouth residents, that are not going to tune into this, they're not going to go to the website, they're not going to go to the city webs, or, you know, they will find out about it after paying for parking one time. And that seems like, that risk, if we can't figure out how to And that seems like, that risk, if we can't figure out how to just, these are electric devices, like, and if we can't, we could go back manually, stick a sign on all of these that say, "We're not going to pay for parking."
What I can do is talk to the parking director. There could be a way to inform residents who use the Park Mobile app and apply the resident discount, because we've been teaching people how to do that. And I had another thought that just went completely out of my head, but it's related to messaging, and it'll come back to me, sorry.
Well, we can't, I guess, like, we can't put, we can't go out and put a placard that says "free"?
We could do that. If Ben were here, he would tell, me to tell you that December was the second-highest parking revenue month of the last fiscal year, second only to July. So we would be giving up 10 days of a very lucrative month of parking. That being said, we could certainly place signs, if that were so desired, and message it accordingly.
Yeah, I guess I would, I don't, I don't want the council to be in a position of voting for something that we expect the only people who are paying attention to get the benefit of. Either we vote for this, and we extend it, and we make a big deal out of it, free parking, or we don't vote for it, and we don't make a big deal. And I guess it would be tough to see that we would assume that anybody would know through any of the normal channels that this is, so either through the app, on the meters themselves, or with signage on it, is what I would expect for this to, so that people cannot pay for parking. Not that we won't enforce it, but they cannot, they cannot, we can't, we've got to be able to just turn off the ability to receive payment for parking.
Your Honor, so I understand where you're coming from, and I appreciate it. There are some additional logistical difficulties. So if we sign everything that you, you can park for free, people are just going to assume that they can arrive at, you know, 7:00 AM and park for free the entire time they're at the store. This creates two challenges. One, in the time when we want the absolute most turnover for our retail and restaurant establishments, we're going to have people parking for a very long length of time, because we've told them they can park for free all day. So it kind of becomes a early bird gets the worm, which, on principle, I'm not opposed to, but from an economic standpoint, if we don't enforce time limits, we reduce the sales that the restaurants and stores are going to be able to receive during the holiday season. However, if we say that it's free parking, then we really can't enforce time limits, because if you give somebody a $35 ticket because they parked for three hours when they thought it was free all day, I think that creates a new challenge. However, the flip side of that is, is if we don't do free parking at all, we all look like Scrooge, and I don't think any of us want to look that way. So we're trying to kind of thread the needle on doing something good for the community, focusing the good on the local people as best we can, however, still getting a little bit of turnover throughout the day, so that we don't, you know, sabotage the retail and restaurant sales during the holiday season.
Sure, I understand this, I just, the, Counselor Moreau, something?
I think, after having worked in the downtown for six years, and parking is always a big thing, I think there's a lot of people, especially residents, who go downtown a lot, who know we have a parking holiday, and they're always waiting to find out when that's going to be. So they'll be looking out at the website, or the newsletter, or however they communicate. It usually comes out in the paper as well. So I would think that the people who live here are going to seek out to find out what those dates are, just because we do typically do that. And therefore, I think it's really the people from out of town that may not know, and I'm okay with that.
Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think this question is for the city manager. How did we do this last year, and did we have any complaints?
I think I can take the second question first, because I don't recall any complaints, and I would believe we structured it this way. We took a holiday from enforcing parking, but we still enforced time limits, so as to keep the turnover. And happy to provide a report back, we still have time, there is one more meeting before, well, there are two more meetings before this is contemplated.
Yeah. Your Honor? Yeah. Counselor Tabor, and then Counselor Brody.
I think if we, if we, I'm sympathetic, sympathy with the mayor, you know, if it's going to be free parking, we should say it's free parking. And if we have enforced a three-hour turnover in the past, that gives us the antidote to people coming in at 7:00 AM, staying all day. If we're concerned about revenue loss, maybe we make it seven days or eight days instead of 10 days. But it seems like we should be clear and upfront that it's free parking. I would think we can show that on the display panels of the meters. I don't know if we can or not, but, and with signage. And I think it sends a message to people who come to Portsmouth that that's how we do holidays here, and we give you that little extra.
Yeah. Counselor Brody?
This has been going on for a lot of years, and everyone I know, has free parking started yet, has free parking started yet, and, you know, I mean, everyone's aware of it in Portsmouth. I agree that it really would be ideal to make it public to everybody, and maybe, I don't know, how many meters are there?
There are lots, and I'm, I can confirm that staff is sharing with me that it's difficult to change the devices. There are different kinds, there are numerous hundreds.
Could be put on them, and that says, "Free three-hour parking."
Solve the three-hour thing. So I guess, like, what I see in other communities, and I've seen, is like it's a marketing opportunity. So I get that we have, residents will know about it, and it's the nice thing to do for the residents. I think the businesses want to be able, you know, they would probably look at us to be able, as long as there's a time limit, to be able to promote this a little bit more than we have in the past. I think that there's, I don't want to do something that we're losing revenue out of and then not get the actual benefit of that from the PR standpoint to other communities that are coming in here. I don't want them thinking like, oh, you know, or the opposite of them, oh, you know, the schmuck just paid for parking, it's free. You believe that? Just paid 12 bucks for parking, and I didn't have to. I really don't want that feeling in people's mouths when they are, you know, when they're in the city. So I think we can agree that this is something that we want to do, and look to the city manager to figure out a way to make this as known as possible with these little machines that we have. Counselor Brody?
Thank you, Your Honor. I agree, this is usually a special gift to Portsmouth, you know, but I think it's a gift to the residents and the people that visit Portsmouth. I don't want to mislead anyone, you know, serving up here, we're, I know we're trying to look after our citizens, and budget's part of that, and parking does make money, but, you know, growing up in Portsmouth, working downtown my whole life, this has always been a nice gift, and I think people that come out of town to shop in Portsmouth, like, appreciate that gift as well. But I wouldn't want to mislead them either.
Yeah. I mean, when they know about it, I feel like they're going to be a little bit more generous in their, you know, in what they're going to be buying. Like, it's just a, free is so much better than anything when it comes to the psychology, if we can fix the time limit thing. But we've spent a fair amount of time on this, so any other questions, or Counselor Bagley, anything else to add on this?
I think I'll rescind my motion, and maybe we can bring it forward at the next council meeting, if the second agrees.
That's fine.
Okay. Do it on the fifth? Okay.
Bring it back under your name.
All right. Next up, approval of grants, donations. New Hampshire Department of Natural and Cultural Resource Division of Historical Resources Moose Plate Conservation Grant for the repair of North Cemetery wall of $20,000. I'd wait a motion to approve and accept the grant from the New Hampshire Division of Historical Resources in the amount of $20,000. So moved.
Second?
Any questions or comments? Thanks for the effort that went in to get this. The cemetery committee, I see Sustere in the audience, great work on getting that, and look forward to the work to begin on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, Invest New Hampshire Municipal Planning and Zoning Housing Opportunity Grant in the amount of $82,000. I'd wait a motion to accept the Invest New Hampshire Housing Opportunity Grant funding and authorize staff to enter a formal grant agreement.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? Anybody want to give any props on this?
I'd like to just, once again, thank our planning director, Beverly Zent. She did an awesome job putting this together. It adds in to our Community Housing Navigator grant that we got. This adds us the money to get the actual technical person to actually rewrite the zoning for all the information that the other person will be gathering. So they'll be working closely together, and with the Land Use Committee moving forward. So very exciting stuff.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, a donation to the annual tree planting for, from Robert Grantham and Cynthia Nix for future planting of trees in the amount of $5,000. Sample motion would be to approve. I'd wait a motion to approve and accept the donation from Robert Grantham and Cynthia Nix for the annual tree planting in the amount of $5,000.
So moved.
Second?
That's a very generous gift, and all in favor?
Aye.
Back to the city manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. A verbal update on the McIntyre project. Last week, the development team of the city and Red Gate Kane did receive some cost estimates from three firms that were mutually agreed upon, and what we're doing now as a team is evaluating those numbers and understanding how they impact the project as the community plan. So we will keep the council and the public apprised of that work as we come forward with information. And the council and the public should know that our next check-in, which is required every 45 days as part of the license agreement extension with the General Services Administration, is set for next Tuesday, November 22.
Okay. Okay. And then there's a report back on the dog ordinance and the Historic Cemetery Committee report. Thank you for both of those. Any other, oh, we got miscellaneous. Citywide Neighborhood Committee meeting, October 19, 2022, minutes in the Citywide Neighborhood Outreach Forum, Ward 1, October 26, 2022. Had the pleasure of attending that in the old New Franklin, or not the old, it's the New Franklin school, but my old elementary school. It's still odd being in there, going to be honest, as an adult, but well-attended. Thanks for everybody that appeared and came before us there. Any other items under miscellaneous?
Just quickly, Mayor, we had 293 people take advantage of Household Hazardous Waste Day this past Saturday. I wish I knew how that compared to previous ones, but we did take a poll to find out if people had been taking advantage of this event, and about half had not been to any such events in the last two years, so that's encouraging, people are coming out. We also include the towns of Greenland and Newington in that effort, and we had representation from all three communities.
All right. Good.
Thanks.
Counselor Baylock?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to remind the public that we are doing a public input session this Wednesday, 6 o'clock, at the community campus, as part of the Recreation Needs Study. So I always compare this to coming to the Fair Landing and not telling me what you want, and then making me just guess what you want. So this is your opportunity to come and order what you would like, so we can give that to you as a council and as a city. But it's 6 o'clock this Wednesday at community campus, and I hope everyone attends.
Counselor Baylock? Anything else? All right. I'd wait on a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, Portsmouth.